Trishelle Gleason, Assistant City Clerk. You are hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Monday, August 7, 2023, at 5:15 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting work sessions on sustainable Dubuque, greenhouse gas inventory update and energy efficiency in commercial buildings, and the Four Mounds Foundation update.
Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for August 7, 2023. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topics, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.citofduque.org/councilcontacts. Tonight's meeting, the roll call is Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Council members Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Rusell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Cory Burbach.
Here.
City Attorney Broomwell.
Here.
All right. Thank you very much, Trish. You want me to -- I can kick it off if you like.
Sure.
All right. So I believe we're starting with our Sustainability Office and Gina Bell this evening.
Good evening. I'm Gina Bell, City Sustainability Coordinator. In 2011, City Council adopted a greenhouse gas reduction goal of 50% of our 2003 levels by 2030. Every three to four years, we measure against this goal. This year, we worked with Lotus Engineering and Sustainability to conduct the inventory and help us get a sense of where we are in relation to our goal, as well as where we are in relation to global efforts and accords. Lotus Staff Member Rachel Meyer, which is a reassuringly Dubuque last name, will share their report and methodology, and then Sustainability Office staff will share information about our pilot project with building owners to improve energy efficiency. So I'm hoping Rachel's on the line.
Yes, I'm here.
All right. So you can take it away, and I will advance slides.
Sounds good. Thanks so much, Gina. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having us today. As Gina mentioned, my name is Rachel Meyer. I'm a Senior Associate at Lotus, and we were contracted to help update the city's greenhouse gas emissions inventory, so I'll take you through that today. So Gina, if you want to go to the next slide. Are you guys seeing me?
Well, Eric can fix that for you. One second here, Rachel.
All good.
Eric, is that something that you're able to switch in the back, please, so we can see the slides instead of who's on the -- who's speaking?
There we go. Now I see it. All right. So just to make sure we're all starting off on the same page and we're all speaking the same language.
Rachel, I'm sorry. This is Mayor Kavanaugh. One quick second. I apologize, because we are still seeing you. That is my apologies. If we could get it -- there we go. Now, okay, we got it up on this screen, right? Okay, we're good to go, Rachel. Thank you very much for your patience, and thank you, Eric.
No, thank you, guys. All good. All right. So as I mentioned, to make sure we're all starting off on the same page and speaking the same language, going to go over what greenhouse gases are, how they relate to climate change, why we want to measure them. So greenhouse gases are, you know, CO2, it's methane, it's nitrous oxide, you know, some refrigerants. They all contribute to climate change. Greenhouse gases form sort of a buffer around the Earth's atmosphere. They act like a blanket, and we've always had greenhouse gases in the atmosphere. Otherwise, we'd be, you know, just like Mars. It'd be really, really cold, or we could be even closer to the sun, and it'd be super duper hot. So we need those greenhouse gases in the atmosphere to kind of protect us and create the perfect climate like we have here on Earth so that humans can exist. We, as humans, have been adding more greenhouse gases to the atmosphere. This is like adding more and more and more blankets on top of the blankets we already have, and the Earth is kind of getting hot, hotter than it should be. And that's throwing off a bunch of processes, climatic processes, like weather, other patterns, you know, plants, sort of the whole thing. So because these weather patterns shift, that means we get things like drought, we get extreme heat, we get the derachos and the flash flooding that you guys have seen in Iowa in recent years, tornadoes, all kinds of crazy hazardous weather events. That is not good. It's not good for our houses. It's not good for our infrastructure, just making life a little harder. So one thing we could do is decrease those emissions, those human-caused greenhouse gas emissions, to mediate these changes. A lot of them are already going to kind of take place over time, because we've already put those blankets up, and they don't come off pretty easy. But if we can prevent more and more blankets from being thrown on the Earth, then those bad things, like the weather events, won't be as bad as they could get. Gina, if you want to go to the next one? All right. So we can actually measure our greenhouse gas emissions. That is what a greenhouse gas emissions inventory is. You look at your emissions within a set boundary. So here in Dubuque, we're using the city boundary as our emissions boundary, and we measure it based on protocols. So we use the Global Protocol for Community-Wide Greenhouse Gas Emissions Inventories, shortened to the GPC. It's the standard protocol. It's what the city's actually been mostly using. It's sort of shifted over time. It was the U.S. Community Protocol, then we've thrown in the GPC protocol. Needless to say, all of the calculations we've been using over time, consistent, very even. The sources we've been measuring can kind of shift or change, but these on the screen are the ones that are -- any kind of source we could imagine measuring is on the screen. We measure them by scopes. Scopes tell us what's happening within a boundary or outside of a boundary. So Scope 1 is everything, an emissions activity that happens within your city's boundary. Scope 2 is electricity use. That is it, just electricity use. Scope 3 is emissions that are occurring as a result of activity within the boundary. So for example, we've got out-of-boundary waste. That is just saying that the waste generated in your community actually gets disposed of outside of your community, but it's still the waste that's generated within your community. It just falls under a different category that we look at. So if we look at this image, in Scope 1, what we did this year in 2020, we have stationary fuel combustion, that's natural gas use or propane, stuff like that in your house, but not electricity, that's Scope 2. We do have the waste landfill actually is within your boundary. So we have inboundery waste and inboundery wastewater. The wastewater treatment plant is within your boundary. We have inboundery transportation, and then industrial processes and product use is going to be refrigerant leakage in buildings, and we were able to estimate that this time. We do have electricity use in Scope 2. And then Scope 3, actually, the only Scope 3 we have is transmission and distribution losses, and then we have some aviation emissions from the airport. Can go to the next slide. All right. So we, this year, were able to add some new sources to the inventory. We just sort of expanded our look. We took a look at that chart on the screen and said, okay, what else is actually happening here in the community that we can reach out to and maybe add, be more comprehensive in the way that we're going about assessing our greenhouse gas emissions? So you can see on the left, the 2018 sources, our residential and commercial electricity and industrial, residential, commercial, industrial, natural gas, gasoline and diesel, on-road vehicles, and then the landfill. So that was in 2018. You can see on the right are all of the additional sources we were able to add. So that's propane use in houses and commercial buildings, fugitive emissions, which are leaks in the natural gas transmission process, and then transmission and distribution losses are losses in the electric transmission process. We are able to estimate both of those. We have, let's see, electricity use in on-road vehicles, so electric vehicle, electric use, since we have electric vehicle registration data. Same then with transmission and distribution losses. We have transit emissions, railroad emissions, emissions from the airport, waterborne, so any fuel use in the port. We have composted waste, wastewater treatment, and then refrigerant leakage, as I mentioned. Head to the next slide. And I just want to drive home that the methodologies are nearly identical between the 2018 and previous inventories and this 2022 inventory. We made sure before we started to assess all of the past inventories, tried to figure out what kind of methodologies were used, which protocol, the emission factors, the base data, everything, and we made sure that we could get as apples to apples as we could comparing, and we could. We got it as about almost identical to the way you've been doing it in the past, which is great. You guys kept great notes and great data. We appreciate that. So just a couple of notes on our methodology updates. So the global warming potentials that we use to update these or to calculate our emissions to make them in a comparable unit to each other, those were updated in 2021 at the end of the year. So we use the most recent ones in this iteration of the inventory. So that's different from previous years, but you guys had kept on top of it with every iteration before, so we just used the most up-to-date ones that were available. We also used Interstate Power and Light, or Alliant Energy's specific Iowa emission factor for electricity use, so it is as localized as we can get. Before the inventory was using a state-level estimate from the Department of Energy. And then for on-road transportation, we used slightly different emission factors from the EPA this time, and we used a different source for vehicle miles traveled data. In this inventory, we used data from Google. Google tracks vehicle miles traveled data using your cell phone. They actually are able to track it through your GPS, so they can kind of get an accurate estimate of how many miles are being traveled within a given boundary. So we have that. Landfill data was the same. We just updated the latest year of that data, and aside from other new sources that I mentioned, everything is, you know, apples-to-apples methodology-wise. Let me go ahead to the next slide. All right. What you want to see, emissions by sector. So on the left, we have 2018, and then on the right, we have 2022. I'll just mention that in 2022, this is including all of the new emission sources that were listed on the slide. So in 2018, we had 819,408 metric tons, and then in 2022, we had 744,112 metric tons. So you went down, which is great. Love to see that. The breakout of the sectors, another way we can kind of group and estimate emissions, pretty similar. So commercial and industrial buildings are still your largest sector in 2022 at 43%. However, it has shifted since 2018. Instead of residential buildings being your second-largest sector, it's now transportation, and then residential buildings is third. All of that together makes up about 96% of your emissions. The rest of waste and wastewater and refrigerant leakage is all about 4%. So pretty small. Can go to the next slide. Now we can also break it down by source. So sector was commercial, residential, transportation. This is electricity, natural gas, cars, stuff like that. So you can see your three largest sources are actually natural gas, electricity, and then on-road fossil fuels, so that's gas and diesel. All of that together is about 93% of emissions, so buildings and cars, 93%. This has actually shifted since 2022. It used to be flipped between electricity and natural gas, and now natural gas, you can see, is your largest source, which is pretty unique, I'd say. You are probably one of the only communities I've seen so far that have made that flip, which is great. Your utility's adding a lot of renewable energy to the grid, which is good. We like that. Solid waste, you can see, is about 2% of total emissions. That's your landfill. Everything else is added up together to be 5%. So of that other 5%, refrigerant leakage is, you know, sort of your largest, but they're all relatively minor. Can move on to the next slide. So we also benchmarked Dubuque against a couple neighboring communities or similar communities in the regions. We've got Iowa City, La Crosse, Rochester, Des Moines, and then Winona. Not every city is able to do an inventory every year, so we pulled the most recent year possible. It's about as apples to apples as we can get until they do, you know, their next iteration of the inventory. But we were able to estimate emissions per capita, so emissions per person, and then emissions per household. So on the screen, you can see the estimate of emissions and population and households, and then you divide those together to get your emissions per capita and emissions per household. Dubuque is on the higher end of emissions per capita and right on par pretty much with emissions per household. Iowa City just is killing it on emissions per household, but they might just have the university there, and that means there's more people in a household. So a lot of factors play into that, but pretty much Dubuque is on par with your neighbors. So that's good to know. Move on to the next one. So I mentioned before comparable sources. So now we're going to take out all those new ones that we estimated this year in 2022 and look at just those comparable emission sources together. You can see that on the building side, everything has gone down since 2018, which is good. And then the only sources that have gone up are on-road gas and on-road diesel. The landfill actually takes a really big dip, but that's because the landfill began capturing landfill gas, and that decreases your emissions a lot. So it actually went down by 75%, which is great. It's a good thing to be doing at the landfill. But you can see, yeah, on-road fuel use does go up between those two years. Can go on to the next slide. Now you can see emissions over time. This is looking at all emissions. We didn't take out those additional new sources, but looking at all emission sources since 2003, emissions have gone down 34%. If we do take out those new sources from 2022, they actually go down 37% over time, which is great. That's a long way toward their target currently of 50% by 2030, so that's looking good. You can see there's a bit of variability. The teal is the decrease, and then orangish is increase, but the overarching trend, you've gone down 34%, which is really great. I can go on to the next slide. So the next part of the project, we calculated a science-based target. So a science-based target takes into account, this came out of the Paris Agreement, looking at scientifically, based on your population, and then a human development index, or what Dubuque's specific science-based target is for your global contribution to climate change. So we used the One Planet City Challenges approach, which is the global approach out of the Paris Agreement, to calculate this target. As I mentioned, we pulled in the U.S. Human Development Index, population projections from the state, took into account Scope 1 and 2 emissions totals, and then community population. And part of the methodology is using a baseline year between 2016 and 2019. That's estimated about when emissions kind of peaked, before they've started to go down globally. So you guys had a 2018 inventory, so that fit perfectly within that timeframe. So we took Scope 1 into emissions from 2018, did the math behind it with all those projections, and came up with 62.4% reduction from 2018 by 2030. That's about 308,000 metric tons of carbon, gets you down to about 450,000 metric tons in 2030. So it's a little bit of a ways to go, and it's maybe a little bit more ambitious than your current target of 50% by 2030 from 2003, but this is then in line with that science coming out of the Paris Agreement. Can go on to the next one. All right. So what's left in our project? We're pretty far. We're almost done. What's left to come is a business-as-usual model that's just projecting emissions out to 2050, saying if we did nothing else at the moment, but we take into account some things like projected increases in the electric vehicle registration, population projections, you know, square footage increases, your utilities' goals. So Alliant Energy does have some pretty strong goals, so we take those into account and say, you know, we think they're going to hit that. What does it look like if that happens? So we're wrapping that up, should be done in the next couple weeks. So that's one part. And then a final written report. So you guys have seen kind of what we would call an executive summary of the report, going over some of the emissions and some of the stats and the results, but we'll obviously write a full report once we have all our deliverables ready, and then we'll share that with you soon, hopefully. And I think those are all my slides. So I am happy to take questions.
Go ahead, Gina.
Oh, I was just going to say, we're going to let Rachel take questions now, and then we'll do our part so she can hang up and get on with her day.
Excellent. Thank you. Rachel, thank you. This is Mayor Kavanaugh. Thank you very much for the presentation. I'll open it up for any questions or discussion. Mr. Resnick.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. So did you mean that 50% by 2030, right? It says 2050.
It is by 2030, yes.
It is 2030, okay. Got worried just a little bit. I thought that's a long time away. Okay, but I, just to be clear, so we've reduced emissions even with our growing economy, and that's absolutely possible and work to do it, right?
Yes. Yep.
So that's exciting. We don't have to cut economic activity to reduce emissions. The other thing, you kind of answered for me to see if we were going to be able to compare apples to apples, considering we had all these new sources of GH that we identified, you know, emissions to emissions, but you've already made that calculation. Gina Bell, I believe, I'm going to put words in her mouth right now, she's going to, I think she said that what we've done is significant, but we've really, about taking care of the low-hanging fruit. That's the quote. And that perhaps the next level is going to be more challenging. Do you find that in other communities, that it does that too, that we get a strong start, but we still need to maintain that kind of momentum to get the job done?
Yeah, I would say in my experience, that is universal. Yeah, usually communities go for those sort of smaller, you know, energy efficiency-type projects. A lot of communities have help from their electric utilities, so you guys, obviously, your utility's adding a ton of renewable energy to the grid, which is great. We love that. That's helping you meet that target and reduce emissions over time. It's happening here in Colorado, too. Our utility's got, you know, state-held, very specific emissions reduction goals, and that's just kind of handing it to you, so to speak, and giving you those emissions reductions without doing a whole lot. That'll take care of a good chunk of your emissions, right? If we take that electric wedge out, that 30% or so of your emissions, that's great. We want to take that out. The next step is the hardest, right? We got to take either natural gas out of buildings. We need to figure out cars and transportation is really the tough piece that many communities are starting to grapple with. You know, your waste is already really low, which is good, but got to get that to zero, too, if you're going to hit, you know, net zero in 2050. So, yeah, you guys are doing great work.
Great, well, thank you. And could you briefly, my last question, what are some of the things that other communities are doing to accomplish, you know, getting over the finish line that you've seen to be really effective?
That's a really good question. I think more expansive transit is always helpful. Some cities are starting to transition to either hybrid or natural gas or electric buses and expanding their transit system. That's really helping. The biggest push I'm seeing now is building electrification, so taking natural gas out of buildings and electrifying everything, because that'll take care of that natural gas wedge in your pie chart. Lot of cities are starting to think about incentives for that. More expansive, like composting and recycling efforts, those are starting to hit the ground. Even here in Colorado, we have like the worst recycling rate in the country, and we're finally starting to try to tackle that. So those are some of the, like, next step that cities are taking.
Great. Some cities are giving some extra push to e-bikes. Have you heard that? And that walking and biking, including e-bikes here in hilly Dubuque, is that perhaps part of the solution?
Yeah, absolutely. So here in Denver, Denver has a rebate program, and it's been around for just over a year at this point, and it is the most popular rebate that I think anyone has ever seen. They've already given out 5,000 e-bike rebates. So we've got, at least here in Denver, 5,000 more e-bikes on the road, and I see them everywhere when I'm out around the town, and they're able to track avoided, you know, car trips and then avoided emissions from that, and it is super successful. And other cities are starting to implement that, and the state actually just implemented a program just like that. Yeah.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So we have Amanda yet, right?
We do.
We do, okay. Let me do that first, and then hold your questions, write them down, and we'll come back and ask Rachel and Amanda more questions and see what else we have to discuss. Is that all, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, perfect.
Okay, thank you, Rachel. Now we want to share with you one of the ways we continue to help progress towards our 50% by 2030 goal. So City Council named implementation of our Climate Action Plan a high priority. They provided, you all provided, a budget for additional staff capacity, which is critical in making this happen. And so Amanda Lewis has been here, been with us for almost a year and plays a vital role in advancing this work. In the wake of ongoing climate instability, the work continues to be critical, implementing our Climate Action Plan. As Rachel pointed out, we've done a lot of great work. We need to keep going. So an improvement package was approved in fiscal year 23 budget to create a pilot program focused on commercial energy efficiency improvements. And so this builds on the past work that our Green Iowa Mayor Corps team has done, city housing inspectors, the Team Resiliency Corps and their energy scorecard work, and it offers potential economic savings to residents, builds partnerships with commercial entities, and reduces our greenhouse gas emissions. So I'm going to have Amanda share the details of this program.
Hi, so my name is Amanda Lewis, and I'm the Climate Action Coordinator in the Sustainability Office, and one goal from our Climate Action Plan is to reduce citywide energy consumption by 10% by 2030, specifically by looking at the implementation of an energy performance tracking, an annual reporting program for commercial buildings. To support this work, the Office of Sustainability designed a pilot program to help commercial building owners with energy efficiency improvements, technical assistance, and funding to make improvements. We wanted to keep equity at the forefront of our work, which I will talk about later, and make this program Dubuque-specific by looking at historic and older buildings. After having conversations with people who do energy efficiency work, we determined that a building inspection would be necessary prior to building owners receiving incentives. Building inspections, which were completed with help from the housing inspectors at the city of Dubuque, were high-level and focused on structural support, major electrical hazards, open sewer lines, and moisture issues. Some minor issues were found after the building inspections, but they will be resolved by the end of this week. Buildings have been inspected and audited, and building owners will receive an incentive to make energy-efficient improvements based on the recommendations from the energy audits. To ensure equitable outcomes in the program, building owners signed a two-year rent stability contract with the city. When we talk about weatherization and energy efficiency, problems like leaky windows and inefficient heating and cooling systems waste money each month. Energy audits can help identify and prioritize problem areas when insulating and weatherizing buildings. Strategies like caulking air leaks and adding insulation help keep buildings cool in the summer and warm in the winter while saving energy costs. These measures help make buildings more comfortable while reducing energy waste and air pollution. while reducing energy waste and air pollution. In order to further determine equity and with help from the GIS department, maps from the Environmental Justice Screen and the Climate and Environmental Justice Screening Tool were overlaid to determine areas of high needs in relation to environmental and socioeconomic factors. The GIS department also helped overlay maps specific to Dubuque, and in red is the Central Avenue Corridor. The stars represent the five buildings in this pilot program, which includes City Hall. We recognize that this is a community-wide action plan and use City Hall as an example for others, as we are doing energy-efficient work as part of the city's operations. This map shows PM 2.5, which are small particles that people can inhale, causing health issues and air pollution. As you can see, the areas where these buildings are located are in the 70th to 80th percentile of PM 2.5. You will notice that PM 2.5 in this map, with ozone level percentages, match in the same areas. This ozone map can increase, ozone can increase health problems, including asthma, coughing, and throat irritation. And participating buildings are also in the 70th to 80th percentile range for ozone. This map shows low-income areas, with these buildings being in high areas above the 90th percentile. More data sets, including cancer risk, traffic proximity, and superfund proximity, were factors in focusing this pilot along the Central Avenue Corridor. Looking at maps from the GIS department and with help from the Economic Development Department, small commercial buildings were chosen that would fit within the proximity of the Central Avenue Corridor and that have an interest in participating in a pilot program. This is an example of an energy audit report for City Hall created by the Energy Group, which is the same group that performs the energy audits for the commercial buildings. This part of our report shows the average energy cost per month in the graph above, and a pie chart with the average energy cost by use. It's been divided out into hot water, heating, cooling, lighting, and plug loader other. Plug loader other refers to electricity from office equipment, space heating, servers, traffic center electronics, et cetera. As you can see, this is our largest cost and second highest energy use in City Hall, probably due to the servers in the traffic control center. We will receive reports similar to this for all the small commercial buildings previously mentioned. As the energy audits were completed last week, we're waiting for the results to be able to inform building owners of what improvements they should make with the incentives provided to reduce their energy bills, lessen their greenhouse gas emissions, and save money. Included in the energy audit reports are recommendations for energy-efficient improvements. In City Hall, changing the lighting to LED fixtures is the most cost-effective and efficient strategy. However, we also need to recognize that City Hall is old, and like many of our downtown buildings, and it poses some challenges for energy efficiency, most notably installing things like wall insulation in brick buildings and new windows because of the historic nature of City Hall. We also recognize that there are costs associated with implementing energy efficiency and could be a constraint for implementation. By obtaining energy audits, it can help make us more, help us make informed decisions about how we operate in historic buildings. By utilizing this report, we can explore options to pay for this with the Inflation Reduction Act and save about $1,000 a year, which would have a payback period of five to 10 years. Energy audit recommendations guide building owners to choose the most feasible and cost-effective option for energy-efficient implementation. Each building has a $5,000 incentive minus the cost of the energy audit to install energy-efficient measures. It is important to note that while we can guess at what make, might make a building more energy efficient, an energy audit is critical for all the nuances of each individual building. Energy audits help building owners make informed decisions to use the incentives for energy-efficient improvements. The final component of this program will be an energy coaching information session with building owners and their employees about the Inflation Reduction Act. There are several opportunities for both businesses and homeowners to take advantage of the Inflation Reduction Act, including but not limited to home energy efficiency tax credits and rebates for homeowners to expand energy efficiency. This pilot program positions Dubuque to be ready when additional funding sources become available. The impact of this pilot program is to save building owners' money via energy efficiency improvements while reducing greenhouse gas emissions, helping Dubuque meet its community-wide reduction goal, and be more resilient in the face of climate change. We will continue to explore the nature of incentivizing energy efficiency and federal funding options. With the Inflation Reduction Act, we would like to support additional businesses in doing this work, and potential partnerships with the Green Iowa Maricor and the Dubuque County Energy District to explore options to provide more energy efficiency work to, to homeowners. This is what some of our building owners have said about their reasons for participating in the program. Yender Dixon said, "Having a positive impact on the climate is important for every community, and being able to take advantage of lower energy costs for building owners and residents is vital. Having lived in other places that are more obviously impacted by climate change, I am glad the city is investing in this way for the residents of Dubuque." Joe Ang said, "I got into rehabbing old buildings. I realized what a burden the energy bills are for the tenant, and thought this would be a good program to help the tenants to stop wasting energy." And Chris Richards said, "Anything that will make a building more energy efficient will be beneficial to both the incoming tenants and spaces. Trying to rent rehabbed buildings and storefronts is harder along the Central Avenue Corridor, and energy efficiency makes it a more attractive place to live." Thank you.
Right. Well, thank you very much. All right, we got a couple minutes here for some questions. So Ms. Farber, I saw your hand first, and I'll come to you, Ms. Rosal.
Yeah. Mine kind of goes to the question of the audit between 2018 and 2022 that was discussed. And the question is, what was the impact, if you know, of COVID in terms of the buildings and the home inventories that were taken?
Rachel, if you're still on and you want to answer that, I'll let you take it. She does these all the time, so.
Yeah, I'm on. So it's a little difficult because we did just 2018 and then just 2022. We didn't do interim years like 2020 and 2021. But what I can tell you, just, you know, universally from other inventories that we've done in that time period, emissions definitely dropped in 2020. Then they sort of spiked up a little in 2021, and then it's about even now in 2022 compared with 2019, pre-COVID. So a lot of it, transportation was the one that took the biggest hit. So less people driving, less people flying. All, that was the biggest sector that saw the hit. As far as building emissions, it actually just sort of shifted sectors. So it was less in the commercial sector, which makes sense, right? People didn't go into the office, schools were closed. And then it shifted to residential, since more people were working from home to school from home. And now it's sort of shifted back, not quite, I think, to pre-pandemic levels. It kind of varies by city, but it's a little bit closer to the same split as 2019.
Okay. So basically, the initiative and the anecdotal data indicate that we're still moving in the right direction.
Yeah.
Basically, in, in spite of the gap, if you will. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rosell?
Thank you. I'm not sure if anyone here can answer this question, but one of the things I noticed that made a big impact was the change, the methane capture at the landfill and the WRC. And I don't know if we still have more capacity to increase that, or are we, have we captured all that we can, and, and that's, that's where we're going to be? Do you, does anyone know? Mike, do you know?
I apologize. I wasn't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Working on my next agenda.
Do you, do you know if we have any more capacity for renewable natural gas at the landfill or the, at the water resource recovery?
I believe the answer is no. I think we've maximized our potential at both places as far as recovery of the methane.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
We'll, of course, be expanding the methane collection system as the landfill expands, but I think we've captured everything that's, I don't think we've got much leakage left. We've got a ton of land, of methane piping around the place. I wanted to ask about the impact of the change to natural gas at Interstate Power and Lights Alliant Dubuque Plant, and then the absence of that plant. You know, it went from coal burning to gas to gone. But I'm not sure what replaced it. And with the closure of Duane Arnold Nuclear Facility down here, Cedar Rapids, I think we're probably getting more electricity from coal than we were before. Anybody got a thought on that or a measure on that? Because that was kind of a freebie, getting rid of that coal-fired power plant.
I think it was replaced by a much larger plant that they built near Marshalltown, if I remember correctly, what they did.
That sounds kind of familiar.
I think they built a natural gas plant by Marshalltown.
Okay. I do like that better. That was a nice freebie for Dubuque, losing that, all that combustion here. But it could have artificially bumped our, our progress toward the goal line here without us really doing anything on that one.
I don't believe it was, that was counted in the initial inventory.
Good.
I think it was purposely left out because we would have met it quite easily then.
And that, and the City Hall chart that you presented showed heating as, as the biggest bite, but the highest energy usage was in summer. So I presume that's heating and HVAC and the whole thing of heating and cooling, conditioning. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Well, we do have one more work session, so we'll, we'll get on to that. But I just want to say thank you very much. Rachel, thank you for being here with us and for the work that you've done with Lotus there. Amanda, thank you very much. That was very interesting to hear that. There was a first report, I think, we've gotten on the energy audits in the commercial spaces. So that was very useful to look at. As we, just to kind of summarize, I think, what we, going back to Mr. Resnick's question and Gina's answer to this, or I guess it was Rachel's answer, you know, looking at transit as we've been doing, thinking about that as one of the, the major places where we can look. But then also building electrification and figuring out the incentives to that for large spaces like we're in now, and City Hall and other commercial spaces like that. And then continuing work on recycling and composting in those programs that we have. And then, of course, our, our fondness for e-bikes, Mr. Resnick, you know, to make sure that we're looking at e-bikes as well, but also incentivizing that in any way we can as a city. We don't always get all the help from our state, and other states do, but we can continue to push for that, too. I think there's a lot of ways that we can try and, and work with this with our, both our federal and state partners. So thank you very much for the report. Looking forward to next time we see you. All right.